See that the top three would be voted on at the regular meeting following the reception. And then if there are ties or not three in that top level, council would determine at that time at the end of the voting before we adjourn to the reception, how many you would like to proceed with as finalists.
Thank you. With that said, each candidate will be given, or applicant will be given two minutes. I'll call you up one at a time. The timer is set, so when you hear the beep, we're going to cut you off to get through this process in a timely fashion. So we'll start with the list that I've got here. We'll start with Paul Pearson. Paul? Come on up.
My name is Paul Pearson, candidate for city council at large vacancy. I've lived in Commerce City now for five years in the Reunion neighborhood of the North Range with my wife and three children. Understanding this appointment is a short-term appointment, I don't come to you with any grand plans of making any sweeping changes, but rather to help to continue the great work of the council. So I've tossed my hat in the ring to be able to bring my skill to the council. I've served in a government role for the last 15 years as a procurement professional and as a military veteran. In my current role, I am the director of procurement for the National Renewable Energy Laboratory in Golden, Colorado. And I'm responsible for the execution and management over $130 million in government contracts on behalf of the Department of Energy. And I feel that that skill can become of value to this council and all the projects that are going forward for the growth of this great city. I'm familiar with navigating policy and regulation-rich environments, and I feel that would be of value to this council as well. Brief story I wanted to share is I, sir, I lived, my family and I bought our first home here in Commerce City. And we left moving west to get a better commute. And right after a year and a half, we came back because of the great community. So I'm here today to try to help better my community, serve my community, and contribute to this great place to be and to hopefully make a quality community for a lifetime for both myself and my community.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Ramon Alvarado.
Thank you for inviting me and giving the opportunity to share a little more of myself outside of the resume that I submitted in the application. I also want to thank Ms. Crystal Elliott for her contributions that she had done for Commerce City over the past seven-plus years. And I also want to thank the nine other residents who also submitted their application and willing to take on this new endeavor and help move our community forward. So I think you have a great pool of candidates. So I just want to thank everybody in that regard. I grew up in northern Colorado in a community similar to this. It was agriculture and also some industrial. One of the things that I later realized that it paid great dividends for the fact that it was an inclusive committee, but also a very diverse community. My success rests on two pillars, which is basically community and also family. With those supporting pillars, I think any community needs. I moved into Commerce City in 2016. Prior to that, I had lived in Adams County, unincorporated Adams County. You might wonder why anybody who's haven't lived there since 2006 would want to be part of this. Well, I think any community that you live in, there's a couple of things that are concerns: safety, health, education, infrastructure, opportunity, and culture. I think those are all things that any community you go to often face those challenges or try to improve upon. I offer about 20 years of experience as an analyst. Of that, one of the great things is that I take a lot of information, I detail the information, and I bring people together to make an informed decision. Often it means that a new piece of information comes in, and you can adjust your thinking based on that new information. I'm not afraid to make mistakes in regard to if new information comes in our way to make a good decision. One of the things that is tangible is that I think is a good community is positivity, collaborativity, and also respect. With those questions marked, I want to just thank you.
Thank you. Next is Lori Young.
Thank you so much. My name is Lori Young. I have chosen to apply for the at-large position in short because I truly, wholeheartedly love this city. When I learned of the opening, I was thrilled at the opportunity to serve our community on the Commerce City City Council. In my work as the Development Director for Community Uplift Partnership, the operator of the Reunion Coffee House, and as the Chairwoman for Leadership Commerce City, I've had the distinct privilege to deepen my knowledge of our city and expand my experience in community leadership, finance, and management skills. These are all very important to the role of a highly qualified member of city council, but my strength, my superpower, if you will, is my knowledge and ability to understand people and build strong relationships. Cities are made up and run by people, as you know: corporations, small businesses, residents, public safety, water and sanitation, road maintenance crews, everything that makes our city thrive are run by people. Fiscal growth, overcoming our city's challenges, capitalizing on our strengths, problem-solving, meeting the needs of our constituents, all happen in the context of relationships. Having a working knowledge of our governing role and our fiduciary responsibilities is extremely valuable and important. I'm certainly equipped with strong abilities and the capacity to do what it takes to fulfill this role and make an impact in our city. But at the end of the day, we will all be face-to-face, eyeball-to-eyeball with people, making difficult decisions, finding common ground, having critical conversations, and working together for a quality community for a lifetime. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you. Jeanette Barrett.
I appreciate the opportunity to be here in front of you tonight. I put my hat in the ring as the councilperson because as I, I've lived here for almost five years now, and as I watch Commerce City grow, I see so much opportunity for small businesses and our ability to bring in more small businesses to the area. And as a small business owner, I do believe I am uniquely qualified to be able to help attract some of those small businesses to our area, knowing what they need and what it takes and what kind of time and effort it takes to build a business, as I have. I'm also a veteran of the United States Navy, so I have a lot of experience with working with other people and understanding how communication is important and how it's important to work within a hierarchical system. My business, excuse me, my business is a property management company, and I manage multimillion-dollar assets for other people. I also have an investment branch of my business. So I work with a lot of other people that I have the ability to communicate with and to understand what it takes to bring people to the table, to be able to get two different sides to come together and how can we work together. And I have the ability to talk to people because I manage a lot of multifamily housing, a lot of issues come up, and I know how to talk to people and understand both sides of the issues and bring those people together to be able to help find resolutions where everyone can succeed and everyone gets value out of the situation. So I really appreciate you considering me for the position, and I look forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Allen Thomas.
Greetings, Honorable Mayor Sean Ford and Commerce City City Council members. Countless Commerce City residents have dedicated themselves to military service. Some residents have gone on to earn bachelor's degrees. Many residents have earned master's degrees and some even doctoral degrees. We have a current state senator and mayor who are Commerce City natives. You made that happen. And those are just a few of the accomplishments of our great city. These are the type of accomplishments that Commerce City achieves so well. My name is Jennifer Allen Thomas, and I hope to join the Commerce City Council to take part in the legacy of facilitating wonderful personal opportunities for our people. I have lived in Commerce City my entire life for 48 years. Currently, I am the co-chair of the Capital Improvement Commerce City Advisory Committee and have proudly overseen our five project goals through completion. I have served on the Commerce City Board of Adjustment and Housing Authority. Each of these positions were appointed by Commerce City Council. Additionally, I was the last school nurse at the old Adams City High School, and I was the coordinator of the Certified Nurses Assistant Program at the new Adams City High School. I have the time, knowledge, and dedication to continue working on the people's agenda. I have a talent, passion, and knowledge for being a successful advocate for my patients. I can bring these assets to the residents of Commerce City. This is why I'm requesting to be appointed to the current vacant at-large city council position. I am ready to serve Commerce City. I'm Commerce City made and I'm Commerce City proud. Thank you very much for your consideration.
June Muniz Younger.
Mayor Ford, members of city council. As I wrote in my letter of interest for the vacant at-large seat, I am a lifelong resident of Commerce City. Growing up, I remember city leaders and school district officials always telling us when we graduated that to spread our wings as eagles, go out into the world, and come and bring back all that knowledge and experience to help our community. And that's what I've tried to do. I have volunteered on numerous city and school district committees and am a founding charter member of the Commerce City Historical Society. I also was a former board member. I have almost 30 years in communications, 11 of which I worked with city and county governments in the Metro North area. I have sat through countless study sessions and city council meetings, read through the weekly packets that you all get, and just like you, I had to look through that, make questions, and then, you know, get the answers for that. I listened to the leaders throughout Metro North area that had made the key decisions for their communities. I believe that what I learned during those 11 years as a community editor would be beneficial to this council. And with the recent laws changing for the oil and gas, I can be an objective voice. I also was a managing editor of a group of energy publications for three and a half years. I want to see Commerce City continue the quality community for a lifetime, where residents feel they are safe, they feel a sense of community, and they have all the amenities they need to live, work, and play here. But also as coordinator of the Commerce City Chamber, I want to make sure that all of our existing businesses and those to come are supported so that they can thrive in our city as well. With that balance of both residents, I guess I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Lucy Molina.
Hola. Buenas tardes. God bless you. First of all, thank you, my elected officials. I'm here once again. Thank you again for this opportunity as well. I've been up here for a few times. I'm already, really pretty involved in our community and in the city for the last 10 years, I guess. And I am, for me, it would be an honor just to be able to learn as well and be a voice, a true voice for our community. I live in, like, by Suncor. I live in the old area of Commerce City, and I feel I represent a lot of the people in this city. A little nervous. So I've been canvassing for many, for many years, and I understand the concerns of our community, primarily education. I heard a lot of my colleagues, I'm honored actually to hear all their talents and their desire to serve our community. I would like to be part of the city of Commerce City, again, to be a voice not only for our city, but also for the Latino community. As you all know, I'm very involved in the education. I'm part of the DAC here in the Adams 14. I was also part of the EMO process. I've been learning. I'm not going to say I know everything, and I'm not an expert. I'm willing to learn. I'm a team player. And humbly, I've learned a lot the last few months through you guys and also through my City of Aurora vote as well in Denver because of our business. Again, I thank you for this opportunity. I'm already involved in the Cultural Council, the Latino Engagement Task Force, and muchas gracias.
Thank you. Megan Grimes.
Good evening, Mayor Ford, councilman, and councilwoman. I'm Megan Grimes, and I want to thank you for this opportunity to reaffirm my interest in serving on Commerce City's city council. Growing up, my family moved often for our dad's job, and the communities we lived in never felt like home, just a temporary place to live until the next transfer. I have lived in the Denver metro area for 11 years and in Commerce City for nearly five. I feel a part of our community and have grown to love the familiarity and recognizing and knowing people in the grocery store, at church, and out to a meal. My husband and I have immense pride in the ownership of our home and look forward to every spring so that we can plant flowers, fertilize our lawn, and tinker with landscaping. He's here tonight, and I know he's shaking his head because tinkering always turns into a project. I'm invested in our community and want to be a part of the team making thoughtful decisions for our future. We are in an important phase in our city's development with many industries vying for the use of our land. I see this as one of the biggest challenges and opportunities in planning for our future. Balancing the demands of residential, commercial, and industrial development, as well as being mindful in planning for complementary infrastructure that will support our growing population and associated traffic, will prove to be an intricate process if we want to continue building a quality community for a lifetime. As we move forward, it is important to learn from other communities, who has done these things well and how can we apply them here. I will bring a balanced approach to serving Commerce City. I am committed to making impactful decisions for our residents, and I will build a community that will make older generations proud and future generations will seek out to call home. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Craig Hurst.
Good evening, council. My name is Craig Hurst, and I have lived in the Buckley Ranch neighborhood in the North Range for nearly four years. I'm currently the vice president of the metro district in that community. I'm also currently the statewide program manager for CDOT's Trucking and Freight Operations Program, and I want to ensure everyone that I've received management legal permission to accept this appointment if chosen. With the work I've done professionally and within the metro district, I began to look for opportunities to get further involved and jumped on the opportunity once I saw the Commerce City Civic Academy was being offered. Through my graduation of the Civic Academy, I now have a strong understanding of how the special districts operate within our community and greatly support expanding the Civic Academy as a community educational program. I also want to work closely with the special districts to ensure that their vision aligns with the city's vision as the city further develops. I'm very excited to take on challenging decisions that the city will face as our community grows within the regional development plans, but I absolutely believe that it is important to maintain our identity through the inevitable growth process. With the governor signing Senate Bill 181 less than a month ago, I'm prepared to work diligently for our community to understand all of the factors that go into regulating the safe operations of oil and gas excavation. I would like to work closely with the city's economic development team on strengthening our sales pitch by using data to highlight our assets, including the diversity of our community. I also feel that my expertise in the trucking industry will be an asset to this community that has more than 100 trucking companies operating within the city limits. And finally, I would like to maintain and improve the council's relationship and support for Adams 14 and 27J as I feel the success of our city's future revolves around educating all of our children and building our quality community for our lifetime. I want to thank you all for this opportunity, and I appreciate the consideration.
Thank you. Maria Gonzalez.
Good evening, Mayor Ford and council members. My name is Maria Gonzalez, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to be present tonight and share with you why I want to be part of city council. I have been in this community for about 30 years, and some of my experience involves working with the city for about 10 years. I have, the work that I've done within, as an employee, was very critical at the time when we were growing. When we started the growth, I actually started the community outreach programs for the city and still 20 years later, you continue to have, which are amazing. I have also started the developers committee where all of the different departments came together to listen to the developers, the architects, engineers, for all of the planning and zoning and all of the permits that have been given for the new construction. I know how the system works internally. I know, I'm sure there's been a lot of changes, but there's a lot of opportunity bringing in my knowledge as a prior city employee. I have also been the founder of the Commerce City Chamber and Adelante Community Development, which is two nonprofits. Through Adelante, I have served with so much of the economic development in our community, making sure that businesses have the outreach opportunity to have resources for them to be sustainable and build relationships with every single one of the departments at the city for licenses and permits and inspections, as well as other agencies within the city: the water department, the fire department, the police, which is very critical. I believe that it is important for someone that has the knowledge how to work on the city, the politics, and also has built the trust in the community and that is willing to just get in there and work for the next few months of these opportunities. So I thank you, and I hope that you vote for me so that we continue that work that you've been doing and really embrace the community in outreach, economic development, quality of life, and our education. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Even though I'm under the weather a little bit tonight, I'm still going to make a speech, which I feel is necessary at this time. We've got 10, not mediocre, but great candidates here tonight to fill one seat. I think it's very important for all of you to know, our goal isn't to make nine enemies and one friend. Our goal is to collaboratively pick the person that we think we need to fill this seat. And there are several people in the audience that are applicants that are friends of mine, that I grew up with and that I know. Same with some of these other council members. And so whatever you do, don't take this personally for those of you that don't get appointed because we can only appoint one. Unfortunately, we can't appoint 10. I would always encourage you to, number one, continue your civic duty and serve on the boards and commissions and stay involved. Secondly, I would encourage you to run for council. There's five seats coming up in November, including the mayor's seat. And it's important that we have good quality representatives, like I saw tonight, 10 of them, that want to take that kind of effort to help continue to move our city forward. So this is a real tough decision for the eight of us because we only get to pick one, and there's 10 really, really good candidates to choose from. That's what makes it hard. I wish there was two mediocre and one really good one and make it a whole lot easier, but there's 10 really good applicants. So I don't want you to, there are nine people I don't want walking out of here discouraged tonight because the intention is not to discourage you. It's to inspire you to continue an effort to want to serve this community. And you need to make sure you hear that from me because that is the intent. Nobody wants you walking away from here depressed about not being appointed, and none of you are going to walk out of here not being appointed. However, it's not because we don't want you to serve this community, it's because it's a very tough decision, and we want to make sure you continue to stay involved. That matters. With that said, Mr. Turner, you want to tell everybody the process, what happens now, before I call for these ballots?
Yes. The city clerk's going to distribute a ballot that has each councilmember's name on the ballot to identify it in the round of one. And there's a circle next to each applicant's name. Each councilmember would fill in or mark three names that they would like to see identified as a finalist to be voted on in the regular meeting immediately following this.
Thank you.
Then Laura will collect them again.
So with that said, Mr. Turney, you want to tell everybody the process, what happens now before I call for these ballots?
Yes, the city clerk's going to distribute a ballot that has each council member's name on the ballot to identify it in the round of one, and there's a circle next to each applicant's name. Each council member would fill in or mark three names that they would like to see identified as a finalist to be voted on in the regular meeting immediately following this.
Thank you.
Then Laura will collect them again.
The top three contenders are Craig Hurst with six, Maria Gonzalez with five, Lori Young with three.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Turney, we're going to retreat into the entryway.
This would be the conclusion. You would adjourn this special meeting and then re-adjourn the, the regular meeting in about whatever, however amount, much time you wanted for the reception, which I remember was about 30 minutes.
Yeah, I think about 30 minutes. All right. Thank you all again. We are going to take a half-hour pause to visit with folks in the atrium. The special meeting is adjourned.